Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with items eight and nine. And as I mentioned, those two applications are very closely related to one another. So we could have a single presentation on those and I think also have a single public hearing if anyone is wishing to speak on those items. So staff is Ms. Sather.
Thank you, President Brown, planning commissioners. The properties are bound by Central Avenue Northeast, Sixth Street Southeast, Seventh Street Southeast, and East Hennepin Avenue. The proposed would allow for a new Holiday Gas Station and Car Wash in that area that you see highlighted on your screen. The remainder of the block to the south would be for New White Castle, which is a fast food restaurant. Both uses require a conditional use permit and site plan review to allow for the future Here is an existing aerial that kind of identifies the existing condition. So at the south end of the block at 107 Sixth Street Southeast, we have the existing Holiday Gas Station. This is just gas pumps on two sides, Central Avenue, East Hennepin, with a convenience store at the center of the parcel. The building and the canopies are presently over the south property line. There's a very long, deep right-of-way adjacent to Sixth Street Southeast. North of that, we have the existing White Castle. You'll see that the drive-through enters off of East Hennepin, and then people will order and do pickup on what's more or less on the east side of the building. They have off-street parking, far in excess of what they're proposing to do today. North of that, we have a single-story retail building. There's two uses within that building. And then on the corner of Seventh Street Southeast and Central Avenue, there's a two-story building. Historically, it's been retail on the first floor and a residential unit above it. 625 East Hennepin is just vacant but currently seated. Here's an existing parcel survey that shows the buildings as I previously mentioned, and you'll see here this existing encroachment for the Holiday Gas Station at the south end of the site. As proposed, as I mentioned, the Holiday Gas Station would be located at the north end of the site. The site itself is a little over an acre in size. Both properties were subject to stormwater management requirements, and I'll get to that later in the presentation. The one update that you'll see from this site plan and landscape plan is the escape lane that was proposed for the Car Wash has been eliminated. Public Works has given input that they are no longer supported. So presently, the block, we go back to the survey, there are 12 existing kerb cuts on this block. As proposed, now we have four. So there will be one on Central Avenue Northeast. There will be cross-access easements for both uses to access the off-street parking, the Car Wash, the pumps, and then the drive-through or the restaurant. Two along Seventh Street Southeast, which is a one-way, traveling kind of north and westbound. And then just the one kerpet now on East Hennepin, and that's really going to be the primary access point for the drive-through as the proposed menu board is approximately here. There would be one freestanding sign for the entire property as well, and that one freestanding sign would be for White Castle to essentially identify the location of the entrance off of East Hennepin that notes the location of the proposed drive-through. Here's the landscape plan for Holiday. Let's see. So for the Holiday Gas Station, as I mentioned before, the proposed land use is automobile convenience facility. That's a conditional use in the C2 district. In addition to that, site plan review is required. You'll note that the proposed Holiday Gas Station meets all of the site plan review requirements. There's no alternative compliance requested, and we don't have any variances. So the other two applications that are required are for signage to allow for a dynamic changeable copy sign, which is a conditional use in this district. So this will show images similar to their other two locations that we've worked on recently, one on 35th and Cedar, I'm sorry, 36th and Cedar, and the other one near Target Field Station. So it'll display items that are for sale within the store. There are certainly a number of requirements required for a dynamic sign, and so as proposed, the dynamic sign meets all of those requirements. Then finally, for the Holiday Gas Station, to allow for these two separate property lines, it's going to require a minor subdivision. So essentially, we go from these multiple parcels to two. So we would create those two and cross-access easements across them. For the White Castle, just the two applications are required, the conditional use permit to allow for a fast food restaurant. I would note the zoning code authorizes a fast food restaurant in two circumstances in the C2 district. The first is that it's part of a minimum of a two-story building, and the other, or the other condition is you have to have a minimum of 660 feet of frontage that has C2 zoning, C4 zoning, industrial zoning. And there, it's noted in the staff report, but I wanted to think it was a little over 3,000 feet, and that's as you travel along East Hennepin, and it has to be on the same side of the street. So to meet those criteria, it's a bit of a steep standard, but it does apply here. So it's not, we're not working with existing nonconformity related to the land use. It truly is allowed for the conditional use permit. You'll note in the staff report for White Castle, they have requested alternative compliance to a number of measures where staff is recommending the planning commission grant all alternative compliance in some cases, but not all. And so I'd probably just bring you to that page of the staff report near the end. So rear of the restaurant, we have the back of the house facilities. There's cold storage and frozen storage, and then some prep area. So staff is recommending alternative compliance to the windows that are facing East Hennepin, the window distribution along the south facade. When we came to committee at the whole for White Castle, there was a desire to see some sidewalk cafe seating that you'll now see as present adjacent to Sixth Street Southeast. So they've done quite a good job of locating a number of trees, landscaping elements, and then also some of their patio seating. And I think it was a win for both the applicant and the city of Minneapolis, kind of liven up what right now is gas pumps in other, in our building that's currently over the block. So that was in addition since the last time we met. So back to alternative compliance. So staff felt that granting that alternative compliance to the window distribution along the south, they're meeting the 30% facing the street. It's just located more towards the dining room area at the front of the store, kind of along Central Avenue and that more of the southwest corner of the building. Active functions again along the east because there are street facades on three sides, the building is required to meet 70% of the width of the buildings on those three street-facing sides, have to have active functions. There's a prep area, but it doesn't exceed 70%. It's about 52%. And then loading area that they're proposing is adjacent to that cold storage. So the loading truck will just back right in, load right into the rear of the building for efficiency. And instead of having the landscape area along the loading area, we're asking for a decorative fence, which they have provided, that will have some vines growing on it. And then finally, trees along the parking and loading frontage. So in addition to the landscape plan that we saw included in the staff report, staff is asking for one additional tree along Central Avenue. We've had some questions from the public regarding stormwater management. There are underground tanks for the site. My understanding is they're approximately 12 feet in depth. There's an overflow valve at about eight feet in height. So we've recently had a very, a major storm event where there's been some flooding in the adjacent streets. Certainly, the proposed development is not intended to take on additional stormwater from adjacent properties. But I received an email Friday afternoon from one of my colleagues in Public Works saying that the proposed stormwater management systems in place will certainly improve the existing properties and hopefully not exacerbate the situation any further. That really concludes what I have for presentation. If there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicants to speak first. And again, I would like to just have a single public hearing for items eight and nine. So if we could cover both sites, I'd like to ask the applicants for both projects to speak first. So please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Cronin. My address is 8809 West Bush Lake Road. I'm here representing Holiday Station Stores. I'm also joined by David Quest, who's sitting at the end there. He's the manager of property of real estate for Holiday. Four quick comments. One is that we have a chance, we have had a chance to review the staff report. We understand the conditions, and we ask that you support and approve their recommendation to approve our application on those conditions. Secondly, since the committee of the whole, I'd just like to speak about three quick changes.
Yeah.
One is that we've received the report of the Marcy Holmes Neighborhood Group. It's in your packet. At the board meeting, there was a, there was a good discussion about our project and about its pluses and minuses, as well as whether there should be more of a residential component to the development on that block. And while it wasn't unanimous, the Marcy Holmes Board voted to support our project as presented, as your staff does. We had met with the Nickel Island and East Bank Neighborhood Association, which is across Central Avenue, earlier this year in April. At that time, they said, come back after we hear from Marcy Holmes, because it's in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood boundaries. As soon as we got the letter from Marcy Holmes, we sent it on to Nickel Island. We had some correspondence with them about how the plan has evolved, and they have not gotten back to us. I don't think they're going to make a comment. So I think that we've covered that. Third, or second, Shawna talked about the bypass. That is just in case the Car Wash breaks down, it's a way to get cars out of it. I've got a sketch here. But we had talked about using a gate with Public Works, and it just got to the point where we didn't seem to get anywhere. We decided that we would do without it. So that'll be a landscape. There'll be one less curb cut into East Hennepin, that hole 30 foot wide inside Boulevard along that area will be landscape. We'll just extend the fence and landscaping around, so it'll better isolate any cars coming into the Car Wash. And lastly, one of the themes that has been very important with neighborhood, and we've agreed to, is keeping that green face of East Hennepin, that 30 foot wide inside Boulevard is a very important feature, a significant feature, very unique feature. So we've done a lot of things along there. We are in contact with the park board, with the forester to come up with a plan to plant additional volunteer, plant additional trees along that edge. It's kind of gotten, the trees have gotten kind of ratty, and it's just kind of fallen apart. So once we have a scheme and the site takes shape, we're going to meet with the forester and come up with a plan for additional plantings along that edge. Minor thing, but along, again, on the perimeter of the site, we are going to replace all the sidewalk around the whole perimeter of the site. I think it'll make a more pleasant walking environment. It'll be safer probably without that, as well as greening it up and maybe getting some trees and maybe some understory planting in there. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions about our proposal that Shawna didn't answer or are not addressed in the staff report.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, we can move on, and if there's anything you'd like to add, please state your name and address.
My name is Craig Eilers. I'm with White Castle. Just to emphasize that, the staff with the staff report, we agree with all the conditions that were recommended. And the store's been there since 1984. It's in dire need of being replaced and upgraded, updated. We have met with the neighborhood, and they requested additional trees. We looked at the plan and put a lot of landscaping effort into it. We looked at Sixth Avenue right-of-way, which originally we intended just to be a sodded area, because it obviously doesn't belong to us. But I think with the new addition of the, it's not shown on this color rendering, I hope you guys do have a landscape plan showing the patio. I think it's going to be a great addition to the redevelopment of this area with that.
All right. Are there any questions of the speaker? Commissioner Breen.
At the committee of the whole, we discussed the signage, and there were two, the standalone signs that were eight feet tall. I can't tell from the materials what's happening with them.
Well, the freestanding sign on Central Avenue, we're not doing that. We're not proposing that. So we're just asking for one eight-foot monument sign, which today there's a pylon sign. So the eight-foot monument sign, I believe, is, it is, in compliance along Hennepin, and that will be the entrance of the drive-through. And I believe the wall signs on the building would be sufficient identification for us along Central Avenue.
That would be the same as was shown in the renderings at the committee of the whole for that one sign instead of two. Thank you.
Right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers, and just sort of sense how many of you would like to speak on either item eight or nine. So handful of you. So I think we'll be able to get to all of you. I'll just remind you to not simply repeat things others have said and keep your remarks fairly brief. We can start over on this side of the room if someone would like to come up to the microphone. Yep, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
This one?
Yes, the center one.
Hi, I'm Paul White. I office across the street, one property across the street from the proposal, from the gas station and Car Wash. I did send a letter today to the staff, which I hope was forwarded. Was it? Okay. Well, I just thought I'd take a moment to highlight some of the key points. As I mentioned, I office across the street, directly across from the proposed gas station and particularly the Car Wash. And then we have dirt in that area undeveloped, dirt that we've been planning for several years, talking to the Neighborhood Association about mixed-use development and so forth. So that's the context I'm coming. First, number one, the COP finding number two on page three states that the surrounding area is fully developed. I just wanted to be clear that we're immediately across the street. We're planning housing, mixed-use with commercial, and we really think that this property, this proposal will negatively impact the marketability of our property. I think the second point is the same in that the proposal, it does put a brightly lit facility, noisy facility right in front of our property. And the finding number two was supposed to protect normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property. And I, all my neighbors have told me, they think that this is going to hurt us in what we've been planning for. In reference to COP finding number one on page two, I'm concerned that the proposal will be detrimental to public health generally, safety and comfort, and general welfare. I pulled those terms from the report. Mainly, the pedestrian and bicycle traffic in the area is already dangerous. It's not managed. And putting this much more traffic under the current plan, the way it's designed, I'm sure that it's going to result in more accidents and more people getting hurt. The second point was just relating to pollution at the site. I won't go into that. COP finding number three on page three states that the project will meet drainage requirements. And I heard the discussion just now. I just urge that you, that there's a deep dive on that subject, because we've been for years managing serious flooding into the basements of properties in the area. And we have it where it comes across from the street, it comes all the way up through our parking lot and inside into our office. So it's a very serious issue. I'm concerned that the way it was represented today didn't give any assurances. It sounded like things might improve. And we just, we'd hate to see a grass lot made into a cement lot. Currently, it's grass. This isn't like rebuilding an existing cement site. This is turning a lot of grass into cement. What is that? And I just am very concerned about that and what that'll do in the area. In addition to that, if there's pollution, if there's runoff in the area, gasoline, and that's coming toward our office, into our office, I'd be concerned about that. And I think just to sum up, or just to make one final point, that in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood, there's an organization that you have a letter from. And at the time that they considered this issue or this proposal, the neighbors had not been notified. We found out much later, in fact, and we talked to the neighborhood, and they said, well, we did what we could, but they didn't reach out to the community around it. When we found out about the project, we did contact the developer. We met with the developer. We told them about some of our concerns, specifically about the gas station has cars that'll be pointing their headlights straight into our property, where we're going to have residential housing in that. And, you know, there was nothing that came of that. We didn't, you know, see any changes or any consideration or any discussion further about it from the developer. So I, my conclusion, my last paragraph in the letter, just asks that if it's possible to have, to refer it back to the community or to the Neighborhood Association, and in the hopes that there would be, you know, engagement with the neighboring properties to just talk about what are their plans, maybe you can design this in a different way that will really mitigate the light pollution, noise, and, you know, other impacts on the area. This is a really, this is a gem of an area for development of the area, and there's a lot of mixed use coming up around it that's exciting, and we just don't want to lock into something that'll really diminish the value of the area going forward. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Questions? Any questions of the speaker? No. We can move on to other speakers who would like to go next. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Grant Simons. I live at 807 Fourth Street Southeast, and I'm an architecture student at the U of M. Normally, I would come here in favor of a project, but this time it's a little bit different. I've been living in Marcy Holmes about a year now, and I absolutely love the neighborhood. I love it because it is a balance of majorly historic and lovely projects that have happened back in the late 1800s, early 1900s, and projects that are coming up that will keep the neighborhood active for the years to come. Last year, the city denied an application for a one-story retail building at 420 East Hennepin Ave. Currently, that site has been bought by a developer out of Milwaukee, and he is starting to plan a hotel for that site. Although Holiday and White Castle can argue that they are in active use for this site, we need to be cognizant of what the area could look like 10, 20, or even 30 years from now. With the current direction of the neighborhood, I imagine active street fronts with condos, apartments, and hotels looking down at busy sidewalks below. So I'm asking you today to reject staff recommendation and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name and address.
President Brown and commissioners, my name is Bob Loken. I live at 2726 Buchanan Street Northeast. I'd like to respectfully oppose this project on the simple grounds that the guidance for this site and the land features adjacent to it, it's in a designated activity center, it's on a commercial corridor, and it is also on a neighborhood corridor. All of those land use features recommend medium to high-density development of a pedestrian-oriented character. This development would result in an extremely low FAR of 0.1, which I think would set a very dangerous precedent for such a prominent site with all of these land use features. And I think it would undermine the authority of the comprehensive plan, and that's why I oppose it.
Thank you. Next speaker? Yeah, please state your name and address.
My name is Manolbi Ariel, and I've been working in that area for about 17 years. I work across the street from the White Castle. And my, the business that I work for has about 35 employees. There's a bar, Brenda Trangle, that has been there for a lot of years. There's about 15 people that work there. There is two small businesses across the street. There is a small travel agency. The owners are from Ecuador. There is also a shoe repair store that is three people. I believe he's from Russia, I believe. And what I'm asking you to do is to oppose this project. We, as it is now, there's no parking in our area. I live across the river, and I have to ride my bicycle. Not that I mind, I like biking, but there is no parking. At one point in our business, there's about 30 to 40 customers that we already have a hard time finding parking for them. We built a little parking lot where the gas station is going to be, the whole's about 17 spaces, and that's not even enough for our customers. After hours when we close is used by the bar right in the corner, because they don't have a place to park. So we share that. In the middle of the day, when we're not very busy, the two businesses or three businesses across the street from us, they use also our parking lot. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that neighborhood, but I'll invite you to go and visit that neighborhood. If you approve this project, you'll be running a beautiful part of northeast Minneapolis. There's a lot of housing, still affordable housing in that area. And by letting this project, you know, go ahead, you will ruin that. You will literally put at least two or three businesses out of business. I understand the whole progress, bigger, whatever. I don't think it needs to be that big. We used to be on Hennepin Avenue, East Hennepin Avenue, and we have to move out of there because there is no parking. If you're going to keep approving these kinds of projects, you have to think about the people that live around there and work around there. So for that, I will help you oppose this project. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Who would like to speak next? Please state her name and address.
Hi, I'm Julia Curran, and I live in Ward Seven. I spend a lot of time walking around the city, including over in this area, and I have commuted by the 61 for two years. I've seen the development of the area over the past 20 years. And the site that we're looking at is something that's really ripe for having an amazing use. This is not it. As somebody who walks a lot, I'm not, it's not an area I would want to be walking. I'm really disappointed to see this as what's being proposed and potentially being allowed. And I'm not sure what can be done to encourage a more walkable, denser, more mixed-use plan at this location. But I really urge you to consider, as other speakers have said, what kind of precedent this sets and what we're looking at in terms of the likely development of this area if we waited even a few years. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Okay, next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Mitchell. I'm a homeowner on 513 Second Avenue Southeast, which is just off the bottom left-hand corner of your screen. And I want to make sure that you are aware that I have a concern about traffic safety in that area. Right now, we have several Metro Transit number two buses that often, I don't, lollygag on Sixth, I don't know what the right word, layover, I'm sorry, on Sixth and back up to the spot in between Central and Hennepin there, as that being the primary way to get out of my neighborhood. I am constantly having to pull the nose of my car or my I am constantly having to pull the nose of my car or my bicycle very far out by bringing the White Castle up to the street level as it is here on Central Avenue. That will be causing not only, you know, to reduce the visibility on that side, on the right side, if you were to be trying to pull out, and there's often a bus, like a 10 or 17 parked right outside the concern. So if, if there's some way to possibly, if you approve this to encourage Metro Council to, or Metropolitan Transit to reroute those two, that would be very nice. The other concern I have is with noise. Right now, the Holiday that is there is, closes at 11, which helps with the noise because I know it says that speakers will only be used in emergency, but that's, as a resident that can hear it clearly from my home, that's often. We don't understand gas pumps, I guess. So I think that a building like this, I would be surprised if they chose to close it at 11. I didn't see anything in the plan about changing their hours, but I would imagine an investment like that, they would probably have longer hours. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. And yes, please state your name and address.
I am Caitlin Murray from 700 Central Avenue, representative of, the property owner, developer of 700 Central, work for Norland Properties Group, and we're co-developing with Beta Development. And our site is directly across Seventh Street from your, from Holiday's proposal, I'm sure you're familiar with. Over the past five years, we've worked really hard and to reactivate and revitalize the vacant, dilapidated historic buildings at 700 Central into an exciting, historically renovated residential building. Our $30 million urban revitalization project was thoughtfully planned to achieve many City of Minneapolis objectives, one of which, I won't mention all of them, but one of which was creating a pedestrian-friendly experience to encourage various modes of, means and methods of transportation around this area. Obviously, we're not thrilled about this proposal on an impact of multiple single-story buildings generating vehicle-intensive uses that will have on this urban village in northeast Minneapolis, which is inconsistent with the published master planning guidance, which you've heard many times, so I won't continue to go into this. But we and other neighbors, as you've heard, have worked hard to achieve pedestrian-friendly experiences in this area. So with that, we have distilled our request and what we view as common courtesy, good neighbor adjustments. Holiday is obviously a great operator, and us, both our, us as the development team and Holiday, we are long-term holders, and so we know we will be neighbors for a very long time. So with that, we propose the following conditions be added to Holiday's conditional use permit. I'm not sure if you got my email from this morning, but perhaps you've already seen this. We understand Holiday meets the legally defined window requirements, but per the resident, or sorry, the window code, but we've used spandrel glass and the signage, we anticipate to be in the windows to be against pedestrian-friendly experiences and environment that we've tried to create at this intersection. So propose, and I wrote this in my email, which you probably have the language, the spandrel, spandrel glass on both facades of the prominent quarter, corner, both Central Ave and Seventh Street shall be replaced with transparent glass, and window decals, neon signs, typical gas station signage shall be prohibited in, on these main corners of, of the plan. Second, we believe Holiday's lighting plan is inconsistent with CUP finding number two, specifically the blue accent lightings that will glare directly into residential buildings. Not, I can't speak for other properties that are around here, but I know they will glare directly into ours across Seventh Street, which will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity, CUP finding number two. Lastly, we're concerned about the noise from the car wash and obviously the traffic from the car wash too. So we, we wish the hours of operations shall be from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and drawing shall take place inside the building with the doors closed. With that, I will step back unless there's any questions.
The speaker? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we're considering items eight and nine together, so we have several applications before us. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start off the discussion with Commissioner Rockwell?
I have a quick question for you, Shannon. The CUP for the Holiday is for an automobile convenience facility. So is that for both, the station store and the pumps? Or is it just for the pumps? Or the, so what's the?
So the land use as we define, a gas station, if you will, is automobile convenience facility. I could probably bring up the definition real quick, but.
Right.
And then the car wash is an accessory use, so that's not a, a separate principal use.
Okay, so we're, we're considering everything together?
That, that is accurate.
In the conditional use permit? Okay, got it.
Commissioner Lukey here.
I also have a question for staff. Hi, Shannon. So just really quickly, in your staff report, you indicated that, that the usage itself was allowed by some really obscure zoning along a 3,000-foot stretch. Can you review that? Because it sounded to me as if you were saying that it's allowed by right, and I just wanted to get clarification on whether or not that was allowed or not allowed, or rest in saying far beyond the pale, or what?
This is specific to the fast food restaurant, not the automobile convenience facility, so specifically to White Castle.
Okay.
Our zoning ordinance authorizes a fast food restaurant at C2 under one of two conditions. The first one is a not, a minimum of a two-story building, which this is not, so throw that one away. The second condition is that we need to have at least 660 feet of contiguous zoning along the same side of the street, and it lists the classifications that applies. I'm trying to find exactly where it says this in the staff report. I'm pretty sure we included it in the site plan review. So I'm sorry, I don't have the page readily available. But it authorizes them to apply for the conditional use permit. Without that contiguous zoning, they would either have to argue non-conforming rights, which they would not be able to retain because of the demolition of the structure and relocation. So it would just be prohibited, essentially.
Okay, and then I just have two other questions. One is really quick, just in regard to the White Castle monument sign. Is, is, is that eight-foot height allowed by right as well? Or is that? Wow, that is huge.
Yes, so we allow, we authorize monument signs, eight feet maximum in height.
Wow, okay, that seems really large. Okay. And then my only other question was just in regard to the FAR ratio and, and the consistency with the comp plan. I'm wondering if you can touch on that a little bit about, given this density of automobile-oriented uses and the concerns regarding what the future of the neighborhood could be, I'm just wondering whether our obligation to uphold the comp plan, whether or not we have any standing even to address that or not.
I, I would be happy to answer that.
Thank you.
So you'll see, well, first of all, at community of the whole, we wanted to make sure that we identified this immediately. We are in an activity center. Central Avenue is a commercial corridor. East Hennepin is a community corridor. And we have existing policies that would, that ask us to support more pedestrian-friendly uses. I would probably add that the pedestrian-oriented overlay district is across the street, however, it does not apply to this property. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we do not have any variances present. Therefore, as one would allude to, there are no minimum floor ratio requirements here. There's not like a minimum building footprints. So instead, we just look to the conditional use permit, and we evaluate the comp plan findings. And I'd say they were probably pretty similar for both, so if you don't mind, I'll just kind of highlight that's what, what we did for an analysis. So the, the, or I'm sorry, for the comp plan, those are the policies that we identified most relevant to the proposed projects, or we listed on page four and five of the Holiday staff report. And again, very similarly in White Castle. And so we recognize that these policies, policies don't generally support these automobile-oriented uses, such as the automobile convenience facility and fast food restaurant. However, we do recognize some of the existing conditions and the fact that they are already present on the site in a very ineffective, overparked situation where we're not meeting many of our existing requirements. So for example, Holiday is built over a property line with some serious traffic issues on the, on the property. I don't know if anyone's ever utilized, decided either as a bicyclist, pedestrian, or as a vehicle, all three of which, it's very difficult to maneuver in and out, and there's certainly lots of opportunities to have conflict between vehicles, bikes, peds, and met transit, as was mentioned by one of the speakers earlier. So for Holiday, that's, that's, that's an issue. It's substandard in area, and it shows because we have minimum laundry requirements for an automobile convenience facility, 12,000 square feet. We're well under that right now. And so, as I mentioned, it, it does not meet any of those requirements. As far as being pedestrian-friendly, which is something that we would want in an activity center, community corridor, commercial corridor, we're definitely making enhancements, or I should say, the applicant is making many enhancements to move us in the right direction. Holiday doesn't require any alternative compliance. What does that mean? It's meeting the landscaping requirements. It's meeting all of the canopy trees, the quantity of shrubs, the perimeter fencing in an open and decorative manner, significantly, significant reduction in curb cuts to build in the expectation of where vehicles are going to be. Unlike the present situation where there are so many curb cuts, vehicles come from many different directions. There, there's a, the parking lot that is owned by White Castle is accessed from Central Avenue, but also exits off of Seventh Street, and then also East Hennepin. So there are multiple areas where conflict with, between peds, bikes, and vehicles already exist. The sidewalks standards are, are not currently being met either, and that's going to be redone with the, the proposed development. So that kind of highlights some of the conflicts that we currently have with site plan review and, and our current comp plan, and kind of the goals that we're going and trying to meet with proposed development. So then additionally, we're in, within the boundary area of the Central Avenue Small Area Plan. So there, it talks about redevelopment ideally being mixed use. Now, mixed use, as we have come to know as a commission and as staff have defined, it doesn't mean mixed use on the property. It means generally mixed use in the area. So we support a mix of uses to make sure that residents are able to take advantage of retail, where they don't feel like they have to go to destination automobile-centric other locations, Mall of America, to satisfy their daily needs, or that, that they can actually walk to the grocery store, or be able to bike to the grocery store, for example. And that we want to have residents and, and office users being able to utilize a mix of uses. So that's what I would say as far as a classification for mixed use, really what is intended, both in the Central Avenue plan and then just generally in comprehensive planning. Ideally, the development intensity here would have been TOD, and I don't think anybody argues. That would be ideal, but the site is under, under control by City of Minneapolis to guide that kind of development, for example. But if that were proposed here, certainly it would be supported in that plan. I would probably also note that the Central Avenue plan talks about the importance of pet access. And I think both Public Works and CPED staff agree that we have made significant improvements through multiple meetings with the developers to get to a site plan that we see today. Of course, as Mr. Eilers mentioned from White Castle, that this illustrative site plan doesn't show the proposed seating area landscaping that we have adjacent to Sixth Street Southeast, so it's even better than what you see here. And also, again, more pet-friendly. Finally, the subject properties are within the Marcy Homes master plan, where it says generally commercial, which, again, these uses would be supported in general commercial districts. Asking for, making sure that audio-oriented uses should not be exempt for providing pet access and amenities, and we believe that those are present. Buildings are up to the corner. We have entrances facing corners. We have the minimum fenestration provided on almost every facade except for one for the White Castle facing East Hennepin. And then front doors established to, maybe oriented towards parking lots, which the Holiday is, for example. However, they should be visible and accessible from the sidewalk. So both applicants have actually done the extra step to say, not only are we going to provide pet access, where logically, if you're filling up with gas, it's the closest door to, to access the convenience store, but then also they have, the Holiday has their corner cut on Seventh and Central Avenue. So that, it's that analysis that staff feels that although we have these existing policies that generally say these types of uses are, are not ideal, we certainly are meeting many, many more of our long-range planning goals as far as site improvements and, and pedestrian access. And staff identified those policies and those statements as being consistent with the proposed development.
Commissioner Rockwell?
Quick follow-up question on, on that. So the, what is the legal relevance of the, the application as compared to the existing site? Rather than the application as compared to the policies in the comp plan devoid of context, let's say?
Sure. If I, I'm going to try my best to see if I understand your question completely. The applications we're evaluating are conditional use permit for proposed land use. If we were instead arguing that the, the appropriate land use approvals were non-conforming use applications, change of non-conforming use or expansion of non-conforming use, the evaluation is different. So for a conditional use permit, you have the six findings that you find in the staff report for each land use relevant to Holiday and White Castle. For an expansion of non-conforming use, you're looking at intensity. You're looking at whether or not it's compatible with the neighborhood and, and for uses allowed in that zoning district. In this case, we already have zoning classifications that allow for these uses. They are conditional uses, not prohibited. So the difference between existing non-conforming and, and conditional, in this case, for the purposes of evaluating land use, really come down to the legal findings.
Right. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Again, we're considering items eight and nine together. Item eight includes four applications. Item nine includes two.
Staff recommendations of both eight and nine, A, B, C, and D, and A and B are nine.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland has made a motion to approve the applications in both items eight and nine, so that's eight, A, B, C, and D, and nine, A and B. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Commissioner Rockwell?
So I, I wanted to discuss the conditional use permit to allow for a new automobile convenience facility. So this is the Holiday site, not the White Castle site. Well, the Holiday proposal, I should say. You know, I, I won't be voting for this conditional use permit, and I'll give my, my reasons in a moment. But I did want to start out by saying, I think that the building taken alone has respected a lot of what the city has asked for. Another quality building materials and good street frontage, door at the corner, and there's a willingness to work with the neighborhood association and so forth. So I want to acknowledge that and, and thank that. I also, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made. This is an underuse of the space. And we've already covered all the ground of, you know, what this neighborhood is and what it could be, and so on and so forth, the transit, the designations. That being said, in all of our testimony today, I, you know, I don't see a way to, to discuss those issues and give the commission power to act. We just don't have, I, I don't see us having the authority to deny the application on that basis. But I think this project raises issues beyond those land use and planning features. The applicant has asked us to approve a conditional use permit to allow an automobile convenience facility, which defined in our zoning code as an establishment where the principal use is the sale of gasoline or any other automobile engine fuel. Then they do have the, you know, and it can include the, the building and whatever, selling, selling other stuff. Hence my question to Shannon, I wasn't sure. So to approve the conditional use permit, the commission must find that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. So this is our general police powers. So this is our general police powers. And the sale of gasoline by its nature is a but-for contributor to greenhouse gas emissions and therefore to climate change. This seems like sort of a lofty motion, or rationale, perhaps, but, you know, climate change is projected to be, and in some cases already is detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. And I'll share a couple citations in support of this idea from the global to the local. So first, from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, "Impacts of Climate-Related Extremes Include Alteration of Ecosystems, Disruption of Food Production and Water Supply, Damage to Infrastructure and Settlements, Moridity and Mortality and Consequences for Mental Health and Well-Being." From the Environmental Protection Agency's Endangerment and Cause or Contribute Findings for Greenhouse Gases under Section 202A of the Clean Air Act, Final Rule, and this was compelled by Massachusetts versus EPA Supreme Court case. Quote, "The administrator finds that greenhouse gases endanger both the public health and the public welfare of current and future generations. The administrator also finds that the combined emissions of these greenhouse gases from motor vehicles contribute to greenhouse gas air pollution that endangers public health and welfare. These findings are based on careful consideration of the full weight of scientific evidence." A little more local, from the Minnesota Department of Health, quote, "Changes occurring in Minnesota's climate are affecting our health and well-being and will have even greater impacts in the future. Air pollution, extreme heat, flooding, drought, and ecosystem threats were identified as hazards relevant to Minnesota's." From the Minneapolis Climate Action Plan, "A move to cleaner, reliable energy sources for transportation has the potential to improve public health. While climate change is a global challenge, local action can make a difference. If emissions continue to rise, the Twin Cities could see an increase in heat-related deaths and heat-related illnesses." And it also cites lung diseases such as asthma, water, and insect-borne diseases. And I mention it's an aside that our comp plan directs the city to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It says reduce, not encourage reduction. So it's a directive, including from vehicle engines in Policy 6.2. So these authorities and countless others state unequivocally that climate change does and will endanger public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. These authorities are also clear that greenhouse gases explicitly including those produced from burning gasoline and similar products are contributing cause to climate change, and thus to the various endangerments previously cited." This then brings us back to our application. The Holiday gas station sits on the clock already, and Holiday is essentially proposing two actions, although they're grouped in the same CUP. Moving and expanding the station store, as I see as one, and two is moving and expanding the pumps and fueling points. I don't want to address the moving and expanding of the station store because I don't see any problem with that. However, I do not believe that improving on and expanding the mechanisms that inescapably deliver dangerous greenhouse gases meets our charge to protect the health and welfare of our fellow citizens. I know that voting to deny improvement or expansion of a fueling facility will invariably raise this issue again for this commission and others in the future, if there are many gas stations in Minneapolis, and they too may wish to expand. And I realize voting in support of this could gradually phase out gas stations in Minneapolis. But if we are, as a city, are serious about climate change and serious about our duty to protect the health and welfare of Minneapolis citizens, we need to be comfortable with such ramifications. These same ramifications in other industries are occurring on the federal level. If we find that the sale and promotion of gasoline with its associated greenhouse gases and climate change endangerous public health, safety, comfort, and welfare, we're supported by the best science, overwhelming evidence, and the highest and strongest authorities." And I should also note that by denying the CUP, we are not shutting Holiday down in its current right to sell, and I don't have any interest in doing that, but I do believe that expanding on this right is not in line with our required findings for a conditional use permit.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Luke here.
Well, I wasn't prepared to discuss that, but I did want to say that I, I do agree with Commissioner Rockwell that this is a legally difficult situation. I don't think we have the authority or the standing to deny the CUPs for either the fast food or the gas station, just based on our authority and what we're allowed to make findings based on. Global warming aside. So I, so I will say I'm, I agree with the speakers and the fact that high-intensity, more dense use of the site would have been preferred and certainly encouraged, and I think we all would have been enthusiastically supportive of that. And at the same time, I do also want to also acknowledge the applicant's willingness to improve the public realm and work with the city in, in regard to the application of the stipending. So it, it's not, it's not ideal, but it, it also is something that is, is allowed in a little bit, it leaves our hands a little tied. So I would say maybe that's something to look for in the future when we plan our policy. However, because we can't just deny it because it, nobody wants to live next to a gas station or deal with the ramifications there, we, we legally can't do that. So mainly, I think it's a, the conditional use permit in both applications that we're dealing with here, that is in question. I don't think the sign, as much as I think eight feet is excessive, and I actually would still encourage them to consider making it smaller, because it just seems like it'd be a nightmare. There's nothing we can do about it, it's allowed, and, and the site planner view actually just seems to be things that would make it better, so I, I can't vote against those. So I'll be supporting it, although I, I heartily do agree with the speakers tonight, and I think that this is maybe just something we need to address in the future to make sure that land doesn't go underutilized in the future. As someone who very much tried to hold out to get a median until there's an electric one on the market, and there is not, so I had to get one. Anyway, I completely agree with the assessment of trying to reduce auto emissions and greenhouse gases. Unfortunately, I think that's a little bit out of our purview today, so, thank you.
Commissioner Rockwell.
Let me, let me ask what our, and I'm, I'm doing this not to contest, but to, so what, so when, when you think about establishment of maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, the, the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare issue, what is, what do you see as our authority there? Because I think, and, and the reason I bring this up is I think the federal government had a similar question, and that's, that's why this was a case that went to the United States Supreme Court.
You know, I, so here, I will, I will address it. I, I do agree, we need to consider it. I, I just question whether the location and addition of gas pumps, whether this, having gas pumps so people can fill up vehicles they have, whether or not that is directly the contributor, whether that's just causal in a way? I, I'm not sure having the pumps themselves as much as having people who have cars that require the gas. I mean, to be honest, moving the, the gas station farther away would actually increase the emissions, because people would have to drive farther to refuel their gas hogging vehicles. It's almost because we put a noose around our own necks relying on vehicles of this nature. So I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm, I shouldn't say it doesn't have an impact, but I'm, I'm saying it's not necessarily, this isn't the root cause of the problem as much as people's decisions to have vehicles that pollute.
Is there any further discussion?
I'd, I'd like to add, and I, I certainly share some of the concerns of, of many of the speakers, that it, it seems like this is a very underwhelming project in an area of the city where we have the policy framework for much more intense development. Certainly, we've seen a lot of development interest in this area and, and some of the most dense development in the city outside of downtown proper. However, right now, the site is zoned C2, which while that can support more dense development, it also supports lower intensity development, much like this. And while both of these new buildings do require a conditional use permit, we, we only have a certain amount of latitude in, in, with respect to making those findings. And, you know, overall, the site is designed in a way that internalizes the vehicle circulation, that minimizes the number of curb cuts, so some pretty significant measures have been taken in order to try to mitigate some of those potential impacts to the surrounding properties. So while it does seem somewhat underwhelming, it is a pretty drastic improvement over the existing condition, and I, I, I don't think we just have a lot of latitude when it comes to denying these applications. So if there is no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Rockwell?
No, on the basis of 8A.
Squeezy?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
It's three to one.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on both items eight and nine.